Welcome, everybody. If you could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bush, Campbell, Clay, Gesse, Latander, Leveque, Matola, Nevis Matias, O'Connell, Rogers, Tedford, Wendis.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a, Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Anybody here for Citizens Forum? We'll need your name and address.
I don't got nowhere to live, but I live in Vernon though. You know what I mean? I mean, I stay down the street. I give you my birth certificate named Janelle Gonzalez. How y'all doing today?
Good. How you doing?
So, Mayor, I wanted to get the, on the bill, the Obamacare that I was reading, there's a lot of pages, you know that? A lot. Anyway, it's funny that I started reading one particular thing that got me really worried. So if anybody takes the Obamacare and you go on contract with Obamacare, these are one of the regulations that Obama approved. If you go on the Obamacare and the website, type in and search E978 legal execution. It says all executions performed at the behest of the judiciary or ruling authority, whether permanent or temporary, as expiation by gas, so they can gas you and kill you under the Obamacare. Beheading, which is the guillotine, they put your head in a machine, they pull it down and chop it right off clean. Capital punishment, electrocution, hanging, poisoning, and shooting, other specific means. Injury, undetermined whether accidentally or purposely inflicted, so they can inflict this upon the citizens of this United States. If you accept a contract, you must accept what comes with it. You could just not sign a contract and just be approved for it because they're going to give you money out of your own social security and they take the rest. Anybody could do that. Now, you have Ron Paul that brings a lot of good questions when he's arguing with these, I'm not going to say all Democrats are bad because all Republicans are not good either, you know, and I see it. But I can say that Ron Paul does bust his lips real well, fighting and trying to get to the truth with the Wuhan story. What the thing with me with the Wuhan story that people don't talk about, what about the Harvard scientist that got arrested? I'm not going to mention his name because he's a hierarchy of dual luminari. That's what the FBI files state. And not only that, he is, and he's an specialist in nanotechnology. He got busted for 21 vials of viruses transporting back to Hui and back to, to the states. Not only that, with the two Chinese dudes that were going with him, but they disappeared. Let's not talk about that. They're gone. Don't worry about them because you won't never find them again. I mean, when are we going to stand up? Not for democracy because democracy is the United States. We're talking about the republic, the American republic, the original constitution of the United States before the corporate identity was established under Congress. Because I know that Congress don't work for us. They work for the Queen. You know what I mean? That's just what the law states. This is a Queensland here, you know? It's just being honest with you. You know, talking to my friends and them learning from me and stuff like that, and me learning these all new laws and stuff, it's insane that we're freed men here in the country. I didn't even know that China is not even the real name of China. It's called Manchuria. The corporation name is China. The country name is Manchuria. Even if you go to the airport and you tell them you want to go to Manchuria, you won't pay. You fly for free. I don't say Puerto Rico. I say I want to go to Borinqueño. You got to tell them the real meaning of that. How, what are we going to, when are we going to really stick up for our citizens? We're going to pass 50,000 here. We're going to pass another 100,000 here. Biden trying to sign off all these bills. He already got us in trillions in debt working with them people. Who care about them people? Pelosi ain't doing nothing. Her husband got jacked up with a knife at the house. I don't know how he didn't get stabbed yet. The police got there. I think that was a setup. Talking about he was waiting for Pelosi. Why they don't talk about that? There's more people in California dying, have no money on the street, while the rest of those people in that side of the government are getting rich. Because a lot of, now, I don't know about y'all, but I know a lot of them have stocks and bonds. And that's messed up. They're trying to pass a law right now that banned, I believe, the legislative from doing stock marketing, if I'm correct, you know? We got to wake up and help the people that really want to help y'all. I'm not scared no more. I used to be. I know what I'm talking about. Don't get me in trouble because even people told me I can get in trouble. But we have to respect our countrymen, okay? Let's not just make laws, man. Teach them too. I would appreciate that. Thank you. Y'all have a good night, but I'm going to be here for a little bit, though.
You too.
I got a break.
All right. Anybody else? Come on up. Your name and address. Names and addresses.
My name is Joshua Prignano. I live at 161 Merlin Road.
My name is Jonah Rodriguez. I live at 54 North Park Street.
Ellington.
So, we are from Troupe 2020, here to talk about some things for community outreach in our troupe. I am the troupe historian and this is our troupe SPL. This is the big man. He does all this stuff here, so I'm going to let him talk for a little bit.
All right. As we said, we're from Troupe 2020. We meet at the Elks Club on Thursdays at 7:00. And we're here tonight to talk about recruitment, community service projects, and fundraising. Want to talk a little bit on the first topic?
So, our troupe has been here for a very long time and has deep roots in the community, but as of recent, our numbers are lacking. We're not getting a lot of new recruitment. COVID really hit us hard and we're having a really hard time finding new kids. We really would like to do more community outreach, whether that be through service projects or any other things that we can do to get our name out. And we're hoping to come to you guys for any service project ideas or anything you guys would like us to do, basically, pretty much anything. We have the manpower to do a lot of different service projects, whether that be cleaning up or anything, anything else really that's earlier. But we really just want to get participation in the community up because, so, we had, what, 10 Eagles, 10 Eagle Scouts? Do a lot of things in the past couple of years, but after that, it's been very lackluster. We've kind of been on our, we've been in the Elks Lodge doing our own campouts, but we definitely want to do more of the community because true, yeah. So, a lot about scouting is getting involved in the community and getting our name out there. Because although scouting is kind of been dying over the years, there's a lot of opportunities for children to learn, and I think growing it in this town will be very, very good for
So currently, for fundraising, we're doing, we're redeeming bottles and cans, but it's barely holding us afloat. So we're looking for fundraising opportunities as well. If, if, yeah. Yeah, fundraising opportunities, yeah.
A big part of scouting as well as fundraising, although our numbers are lower, it means we need to send us more, things are very, very expensive for campouts and things. We really do need fundraisers. A lot of opportunities have kind of slipped past us, and like we said earlier, cans and bottles is barely holding us on. Not a lot of people know about it. We don't really have, we've tried to get our name out, as we mentioned earlier, but it's been very, very hard with the limited numbers and resources that we have. And fundraising is definitely a big part of making a scout troop a scout troop. Again, any fundraising we can do in this town and help get our name out in community service at the same time would be great. We really just want to get community outreach, hopefully get our numbers up, but that's about it.
Thank you. Do you guys want to give a contact, any contact information?
Oh, yes.
For the troupe?
Our website is t2020.org. And should I give?
You can give Mr. Mack's email. Do you have Mr. Mack's email?
Yeah. Basically, all of our, our contact information is on the website, on the contact tab.
Repeat it one more time.
T2020.org.
Thank you.
And if you would like a leader contact, we do have a leader in the crowd. And if you'd like any of our numbers to contact, especially his, the big guy, we'd be glad to give you that.
Thank you. Anybody else for Citizens Forum? Marian.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'd just like to say, I think Vernon's very lucky. We have so many wonderful volunteers in town. But I need to clear something up. I don't know, some people may not be aware of, but each and every one of us, town council members, are volunteers. We're elected officials, yes, but we're not paid for our job. We volunteer for the town because we love this town so much. So I just wanted to, and the Board of Ed, same thing, but we are proud of what we do and what we try to accomplish, but we've accomplished a lot. But just to clear up things, thank you.
Anybody else? No? All right.
Sorry.
I think that was a late one there, Terry. I think that was a late one. Go ahead.
Sorry. Through you. First of all, glad to see you guys are feeling better. Good for that. I was reading an article, a letter to the editor on February 10th in the JI, so I don't know if anyone else here saw the letter or not. Well, it was a letter about communication and how we communicate to our constituents and to our community, which kind of made me stop and think of, hey, the person that wrote this kind of hit the nail on the head. It's like, how do, how do we actually communicate? Because I know, I mean, I've been sitting here for about a year and three months, and I find that I am not aware of things unless I see it on Patch or the gentleman Ryan, and I don't want to call him out his name, but usually it's like after the fact that we hear or see, things that are happening within the community, I suppose, that's supposed to be communicated through us. So I don't know if I am missing something and I am not going into my emails or what, is there a policy procedure or standard that we should be following in order to get, you know, things communicated to us? So just reading that letter to the editor kind of made me stop and think, what am I missing or what am I not, like, doing the right way? So I, just a little clarification on how we should be communicating here, it's council members, into our constituents in the community.
Keep an eye on our website. We try to put up everything on the website and, you know, I highly recommend people. We're also in the process of, are we, how much further on our alerts, our alert system? Almost there? Okay. So we have a non-emergency alert system that we're in the process. We should be done soon. Every time I say that, we got a little longer to go. But what it does is it's going to allow you to go into the system and choose what you want to be told about. So if you want information that's being put out by Public Works, the school, or everything, then you can click and it'll send you a text message or an email about what, you know, something that's coming up or something of importance. So that's just something else we're working on. We always, obviously, we have our, our magazine we put out and the website. I mean, the website's a pretty big thing, you know, and a lot of people don't, you know, I know that editorial you're talking about, it says it's difficult. I don't find it difficult at all. I find it quite easy to navigate our website.
Well, I've gone on it.
And I've had no complaints about it.
I mean, I might, I'm not computer savvy, but I've gone on it and I've been a little bit confused about, what is this or what's that? But then I stop and you figure it out. But I think the website could be tweaked a little bit more and more user-friendly for some of us that aren't that tech savvy.
The problem is, is that it is pretty easy.
Yeah.
You know, and, and there's a lot of information that has to be portrayed on it. So, you know, and again, we have basically given out tons of information and we never cease to not give information out. So I think once this other system goes online, I think a lot of people will hopefully take advantage of it and you can control it. So if all of a sudden you put one on and you're like, wow, I'm getting a lot of messages on this, then you can click off of it. You can turn that part of it off.
So that's basically like good for the-
We'll let everybody know once that's up and running.
Yeah, so it's, you know, for the community-wise, that's like excellent, but council-wise, I don't, like I said, I'm not sure if I'm missing something or you're finding out after the fact that something has happened or, you know, just an update and it's like, whoa, it's already taken place, so, you know, it's like a mute point for us to even know about it. So I think just a little bit more of a conscience effort to keep us more aware, especially as newer ones that are here.
Like I said, keep an eye on the website.
Yeah, okay.
Brian?
You know what I wanted to say was, I read that editorial too. As an IT professional, everybody criticizes everybody else's website. So like, tell me what you were looking at and let's see how, why, so, because any website you go to, you know, I want that information right in front of me, but it never is. You got to click through this, click through that, and when you're not familiar with it, that's what happens. So he must have been frustrated. It'd be interesting to see what he was looking for and maybe he was looking for something that's not like, I was looking for the Connecticut bill on Northeast Utilities. Well, we don't have it on our website. Look at the, you know, you're looking at the wrong other website. It just, when you're in the business, it's like hypercritical. You want to sometimes just go in the corner and cry and say, oh my heavens, I can't please everybody, you know?
Of course, everybody's going to criticize everybody, but, you know, like I-
We are in Citizens Forum and it's not supposed to be going back and forth. So I'm going to, I'm going to stop it at that point. All right. Is there anybody else for Citizens Forum? No? Okay. We're going to hold off on the executive session till the end again. I got a couple of things to present. First of all, I do want to thank Brian for taking over for me at the last time council meeting. I think that might have been either two or three out of my whole, out of the nine-plus years, you know? You never know when you're going to get sick. I think my wife and I have been exchanging sickness for two months now. But, all right.
It's a joke, you know? Never mind.
Yeah. So again, I do want to thank you, Brian, and thanks everybody for their patience on that. Did he do a good job?
We only messed up seven of the 12 votes.
That's not what I heard, but that's okay. All right. There's going to be a joint meeting planned for March 7th, 2023, from 6:00 to 7:00 to provide an update on the Miracle League fields plan for Northeast school property. This will be a joint meeting between the Board of Ed and Council held here in the Town Council chambers. More information will come, but basically, they want to present the plans to us all and kind of show you what's, what we have planned up there and, you know, a lot of, how many people were at the, there was a bunch of us at the ribbon cutting up there. You know, it's, it's going to be a good project and I really think that, you know, it's going to serve quite a few people and I'm happy about it. But if you can't make that meeting, if you can let Diane know, either before tonight or call in if you can't, just we have our numbers and we know what's happening. Superintendent Dr. Joseph McCary has been recognized as outstanding school superintendent by UConn School of Education. Dr. McCary has been Vernon superintendent since 2015 and has many accomplishments to his credit. Congratulations to Dr. McCary. A new business has joined the West Main Street Business District, Heizer Disc Sports. Heizer Disc Sports carries everything you need to play disc golf here in Vernon and other, and our surrounding towns. And, you know, they will be going up to Eckert Hill Disc Golf Course at different times throughout the year. So it'd be a great chance, if anybody hasn't tried it, to go up and try it. I just want to point out during the grand opening, were you there, Julie? Somebody was there. Were you there? It was me and one of the town councilmen, I think, but I think it was you, Laura. We're basically against the New England Grand Champions, and this is just the first hole, you know? I think it was you, Laura. But we beat the Grand Champions on the first hole and at that point, we graciously stepped away as, as winners of the Grand Champions. We know when to get, you know? But, you know, if you've never tried it, it's actually, it's a great sport. And just walking that course up at Eckert Hill, it's, it's great exercise. And, you know, by the time you finish, you'll have your exercise. Hopefully, you'll be Grand Champion Masters as well, but I highly recommend it. The budget agendas are being prepared now and will be distributed with the book, budget books for the council members and posted for the public on the website. Budget meeting dates are on the town's website. Books will be delivered by March 15th, and our first meeting is Saturday, March 18th at 9:00 AM here in the chambers. So everybody get yourselves ready. We're almost there. I know we're all looking forward to it. All right.
Sorry, through you.
A question on this?
Yeah. Did the date from the 18th change?
Nope. It's the same. All right. The consent agenda, Brian?
Mr. Mayor, motion to move the consent agenda as written.
Seconded by Julie. I knew I heard somebody over there. Any poll? Are we pulling either one of those? No? All those in favor? Unanimous. All right, Brian, new business number one.
Mr. Mayor, resolve, the Vernon Town Council graciously accepts the gift of $15,000 from the Rockville Bank Community Foundation for the Tri-Town Fuel Bank and further authorize Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to submit the requested acknowledgement form for same.
Seconded. Seconded by John. You know, the Rockville Bank Community Foundation's still out there. You know, we may miss our bank, but the foundation's still there. So this was a great donation to help our area people who are having a real hard time to pay their fuel bills this year, especially this year. All right, any questions on that? Brian?
So I've, I've never seen us have response, like, accept donations. I know the church, our church has donated to the Fuel Bank maybe just a month ago. So I don't, we never had one of these come in before us again. Is there a special reason of this one?
Well, I just started basically acknowledging some of the, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's good for us to, to see, you know, who's out there, who's donating.
It is, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. All right, anybody else? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. Brian, number two?
Mr. Mayor, resolve, the Vernon Town Council hereby accepts the parcel known as 686 Dart Hill Road, Vernon, Connecticut, from the Hockenheim River Linear Park of Vernon, Inc. Further, the Town Council authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to sign any and all documents for same.
Seconded.
Seconded by Marian. All right, questions?
I thought I'd just give you a little history about this piece. Listen up, Brian. Deputy Mayor. This, this was the parcel that Brian and Claire Janowski had written a grant for back in 2005, I think, and as, through the friends of, do you remember?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Not the date, though.
What was that?
Not the date.
Not the date, though. I'm not even sure that's the right date, but it was intended to be transferred to the Dart Hill Park. It's the parcel, as you're driving into Dart Hill Park, it's the land on the left and it's pretty much all wetlands. There's a stream running through it. So it really had no value as a residential lot. But at any rate, that transfer to the town never happened, and I didn't realize that until I was going through papers from Jenny, who was Jenny Gengres. And so that's why we suddenly brought it to the surface and realized, oh, we own some property here and it should have been transferred. So it's just a slip, you know, in the crack, something got in the cracks here, but we think, we can thank the deputy mayor for this parcel.
Is this big enough to put apartments? That was a joke. I've walked, I've walked the parcel and it is, it's adjacent right to our park and there is some wetlands, well, a lot of wetlands in there.
A lot of wetlands, yeah.
So, and, you know, it should stay with the park and, you know, we do thank them for, you know, sending it over to the town.
Yeah, we always thought it was part of the park.
What's that?
We always thought it was, so.
Yeah.
We didn't, didn't know it hadn't been transferred.
That's right. It's done now. Well, it will in about two seconds. Any other questions? All those in favor? Unanimous. There we go. All right, Brian, number three?
Mr. Mayor, resolve, the Vernon Town Council approves the quitclaim deed and mutual access agreement as presented and further authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to sign any and all documents for same.
Seconded.
Seconded by Terry. I knew I heard somebody over there. All right, let me just kind of give you an update on, on what this is. So anybody that knows Chamberlain Street, you know the Chamberlain Street that's on the eastern side that comes off of Franklin? Well, I guess the street used to be this horseshoe shape and the town never owned it. And when this parcel went for sale and they put Pitcat Housing there, whoever owned that road never gave it to them. So we don't own it. They don't own it. The club down there doesn't own it. So what do you do with it? Well, we give it to, to one of them with a quitclaim deed, and that's what we're doing today. And the, the club has the right of way to use it, but now it's somebody will own it and actually take care of it. And that's basically what we're asking everybody here to do tonight. Any questions on that? No? All those in favor? Unanimous. That was pretty easy. Brian, number four?
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby approves the disposal of assets for the Vernon Police Department as disclosed on the request for disposal of fixed assets form.
Seconded by Laura. All right, as you look, there's a bunch of portable radios that are all at their time to be disposed of. As you guys know, we don't just throw them away. We go out and try to sell them, and if we can sell them, we do, and that money goes back to the, the town of Vernon. All right. Any questions on this? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby approves the disposal of assets for the Vernon Public Schools as disclosed on the request for disposal of fixed assets form.
The seconded by Linda. As you, you know what, just so everybody knows, I ended up with tetinitis, tinnitus, whatever it's called. I can't hear myself speak, so. So if, if you, if I have to, if I'm trying to question it, that's why. It's so fun to have. So the same, same reasoning, you know, cleaning out the cupboards here and, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Brian?
Seeing one from the Board of Ed here. So my question I had was, was this a safe that they use and what's the purpose of the safe? And did they buy another one and that's why they're getting rid of this one or?
Well, it's safe to answer. Well, Mike's going to answer.
Through the mayor, this is a safe that's been in the business office, at Central Office. It's a safe that's used frequently, similar to how we utilize our safe in the Finance Department. It simply outlived its useful life. The cost of repairs outweighed the cost of replacement, and that's why it's before you for disposal. And they will pursue, if we can get any, you know, money for the metal or anything else, that will be pursued.
And then you're buying into what?
Through the mayor, the Board of Ed has already purchased a new one because they had to because the current one was not able to be locked.
Oh. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Safe that doesn't lock. Safe that doesn't lock doesn't work. I just made that up. What do you think? It's not safe. All right. Any other questions on that? All those in favor? Unanimous. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council amends the public hearing schedule for the 2023-2024 Town of Vernon budget cancel, budget, canceling the public hearing scheduled for March 18th, 2023 at 9:05 AM and adding a public hearing on Thursday, March 23rd, 2023, beginning at 7:05 PM. The public hearing location will not change. The hearing will be held in the Town Council Chambers, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut.
Seconded by Laura. So, essentially, the reason that we're moving the public hearing portion, we're not moving the date of, of the budget meeting, we're doing the public hearing is because we, the timing for posting, we wouldn't quite make it if we didn't change that. So, by changing it, we can get the postings all that have to legally be out there done correctly. Any questions on that? Mary Ann?
It's not really a question, it's a comment. It was our only Saturday for the public. I'm just thinking, this will make two Thursdays for the public hearing, right? Instead of a Thursday and a Saturday?
Diane, is that? It's two Thursdays that the public hearings are gonna take place?
That's correct. By the rules for the budget, every meeting has a Citizens Forum.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I was confused on the dates when you were announcing the 18th and so I knew something was changed, so.
So, the budget meeting isn't changed, you just, the public hearing is changing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. Brian, let's do the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council waives the reading of the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting on February 7th, 2023, and that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Mary Ann, seconded by Mary Ann. Questions, corrections, deletions? None? All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. Hold on one second. Brian, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna change up the order of these for a second. We have somebody that's gonna come in with us. Sorry, guys. Brian, we're gonna start with the executive session number four and we're gonna add Liz Bologna, Executive Director.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council pursuant to the authority given in Connecticut General Statute 1-206D hereby moves to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations and invites Michael J. Precaro, Town Administrator, and Liz Bologna, Executive Director of the Arts Center East, to attend.
Seconded by Mary Ann. All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. We'll be back.
The Town Council hereby approves the appropriation of ARPA funding, the amount not to exceed $37,500, for the purchase and installation of guide rails from Atlas Industrial Services and further authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to sign any and all documents for same.
Second.
Seconded by Mary Ann. All those in favor? Unanimous. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby agrees to the full and final settlement as presented in the matter of Cruz v. Town of Vernon BOE to resolve said claim. Once the settlement is executed, it will become public.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to sign any and all documents relative to the one-year lease modification with the Vernon Community Arts Center.
Keep going. Oh, wait, are these two separate motions?
I don't know. I was wondering.
They are. Okay. Yep. Seconded by Mike. All those in favor? Unanimous. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby authorizes the payment of 50% of the utility costs for the property known as 709 Hartford Turnpike, Vernon, Connecticut, and said 50% utility cost will be paid directly to the utility company as required, as required through the Public Works budget. The remaining 50% will be paid by the tenant, Vernon Community Arts Center, per said lease dated April 25th, 2016.
Seconded by Mary Ann. All those in favor? Unanimous. And the last one.
Congratulations, Liz.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby approves the memorandum of agreement with the Rockville Downtown Association for the July in the Sky Downtown Event as presented and further authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to sign any and all documents relative to the same.
Second.
Seconded by Laura. All those in favor? Unanimous. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Ariana. Not that she's in a hurry. All those in favor? Unanimous.